Hi, what was your standing? Who carries? The car executive.
You don't want me uploading my entire Apple. Hang up your bandwidth.
Yeah, that's true. Although it tells me I'm not connected to the internet right now. All right, public session is now called to order. Please stand for the same with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll have our Capitol Project presentation.
I'd like to introduce Brad Valancourt from Trump and Associates.
Unfortunately, the representative term of construction was unable to attend, but they did this with the process to date. Plan to in the future. This is for the 2022 Capitol Project. The vote is settled for the number twenty ninth of 2022. How we derive the scope of this project, we started with the 2015 building condition survey. Unfortunately, every five years, you guys are usually scheduled to do the building condition survey. S C D decided to change that up in 2020. So your guys' building condition survey is scheduled till 2024. So that's why we use the 2015 one. So we've used that in the 2020 project. So we went back to that spreadsheet, started to look at the priority ones and choose for fives, met with district administrators, facilities on the district needs portion. Many sessions going back and forth, we re-prioritize to fine tune the scope of the project. Depending on health and safety items, energy efficiency, lifespan, looking at everything to try to zone in on the size of the project, the scope of the project. We have a project that we're both posing is fifty nine million dollars. The big key component, there's no cost to the taxpayers. So it's tax neutral.
And if I could just add the idea being that the approximately twenty percent that the district has to cover is actually covered through a restricted reserve that already has the dollars in it to cover our portion.
As far as schedule, you click on the other one. This is the next two pages of the eight and a half by eleven are the same as this other eleven by seventeen, but the eleven by seventeen, you can see a little bit better. When we're talking about the span of the project when construction is happening. So the the red square is the November twenty ninth board approval date. Phase one is the storage building of the project. We'll get into that component and all the rest of the scope in a minute. But the storage building would be phase one. Along with any other work that can be done, getting through S C D review, doing the design. Going out to bid, the real key thing is can you get the materials in time to construct it in 2023? So we're kind of in the middle of that. Trying to decide that we reviewed it with Turner. We have other work sessions we have to go through to really decide not just what scopes in the phase one, but any of the the phases. So phase two is the auditorium addition. That is the big component in that one. It would span construction in 2024 and 2025. There's another phase three that we're calling for the other work not including the addition. Again, those are in the same 2024, 25, and then there's a phase four, which would be spanning 2026 and 2027. So we have construction right now spanning five different years. Because it is fifty nine million dollars. Other than phase one, that's a million dollar project. Phase two is twenty five million, phase three is seventeen, and then phase four is sixteen. The reason why we have the auditorium in phase two, because that's the highest priority item. We want to make sure that gets done. If we need to adjust any of the scope throughout the process, we have the phases three and four to do that. Because phase three is basically being bid the same time as auditorium. So that's what phase four is. And as we go through the process, we're constantly adjusting the scope. You know, different things come up during the process. Something is for replacing doors. You know, there might be a door that got damaged or a mechanical unit that all of a sudden is having issues. So that that's just part of the process. So.
And if I could just add one thing about the timeline, just to put it in perspective, our project that we're just finishing now was about three year project. And the total cost of that was about thirty million dollars. We figure out ten million dollars a year. This is a little under sixty for about six years. So we're talking about about ten million dollars a year. Idea being that there's going to be numerous phases of this project stretched out, but all within one proposed project.
Yes. And it'll allow you guys to close out a project and start getting aid from S C D.
Question on that. Okay. Looks like it's going to go to twenty four, twenty five, maybe twenty six. What happens when we have another building condition survey in twenty four? There might be new things, right?
There might be new things. I mean, even though we were using the 2015 building condition survey, we we've been working at the district for over ten years. So we know the conditions of some of the equipment without even walking around. There has been stuff that has come up on other projects. We've kept a list of that, and that's actually part of the items in the district needs is those items that were discovered through throughout the process of other projects. Greg and his team really put together a good list. A lot of the stuff is mechanical stuff. So you don't, it's not something you visibly see. They're on the roof. They're behind closed doors. But in the 2024 building to the survey, when that is done, if something comes up, we can look at the scope and see how we can get something if it's that critical into the project. And that really would fall into the phase for project at that point.
Thank you. No, great answer. Just even and add a part of that, you know, if you use an example like UNIVENTS, right? We may have identified certain UNIVENTS that need to be changed out just because they're going to get to their, you know, end of their useful life. But the reality might be that as this project's going on, those are still working pretty good. We get to twenty five, twenty six. But we all of a sudden find that two other ones go out while we're doing this work. And so we just change which work, scope of work we're doing a little bit, right? So with a lot of the mechanical items, you you just know that there's a useful life and the goal is to kind of do those as they come out of their useful life.
Yes.
It's a good question.
Can you flip back to the other part? Thank you.
So we kind of touched on the next two slides, which were about schedule. Kind of giving you a summary. The next slides are really, like I said, a summary of the work scope. Not every single work scope item is in these slides. There's stuff that's not. We just took the bigger items, not necessarily always dollar amounts, but more priority. Under kind of the main heading, there's a dollar amount that is associated with the scope of that work scope item. First item is district wide. When I say district wide, that's all district buildings except Tuscaraw. So if I say it throughout the conversation, it's everything except Tuscaraw. So the district wide improvement here is security and access control. It's going around, which we've already done. The floor plan to the left is Colonial Village. We have plan of that of every single building. The blue indicates doors that have access control and the red are the ones that need access control. That's a FOB or swipe card to be able to get into the buildings. The image to the right is really a hierarchy of the keying system. So you guys have control over your buildings and you can limit who gets into those buildings. To increase the security. So not everybody has a key. If you lose a key, it's easier to adjust for that. Also with security and access control, we're going to be replacing exterior doors, interior doors, the hardware components that go along with that to again, increase that security level. Another district wide improvement is interactive classroom display boards. This is something that's been talked about on numerous projects for years. This isn't something that would be in a building condition survey. So this is something that would be put in every single classroom. I know there's already something happening at the high school, but it's the the rest of them more if we need to do something at the high school to build on their system that they're having put in, that would be part of that, too. Plumbing upgrades going from just drinking fountains to a combination drinking fountain bottle filler. S C D with COVID, everybody was going to just bottle fillers, but S C D does not allow just bottle filler. So that's why it's still a combination unit. So you get dual purpose. A lot of these are handicap accessible. So it's always, it's also looking at that and making them compliant. The wash basin photo on the right. There's been issues with the sensors on those things going. It's really a maintenance nightmare issue for the district. So it's replacing those units. What's not in any of these slides is putting in hand dryers to save on the maintenance cost of having to change out the paper in it. Changing out the garbage cans, upgrades like that. So. Electric vehicle charging stations, not only for vehicles, but also buses, looking into the future at where the whole electronic, electrical vehicles is going. There's been a lot of discussions about buses being electric by, I think, twenty thirty five, if I'm right. So it's kind of trying to look ahead. There is a lot of other power requirements, your main services that also would go along potentially with the level. Whatever levels determine, there might be other stuff like that because it's really infrastructure that you're going to need to increase to be able to do that. Going to more individual buildings at the bus garage is replacing the three bus lifts. We actually have two of the bus lifts designed in the 2020 phase four project. If budget wise, we can only do one of them, then we're going to end up doing two in this project. So it's kind of already in the works a little bit. We'll see where we get with the 2020 face for project and then we can do the rest there. Emergency generator at the bus garage, we're looking to replace that and replace the transfer switch safety panel. In the 2024 phase two project, we actually looked at reusing a generator that was installed at Colonial Village. It was an interior unit. We just couldn't get it to work. We didn't have the right enclosure. It wasn't the right size. So that's how this made it to the job. Colonial Village roof replacement, you probably have seen this before. This is basically completing the rest of the building. So everything other than yellow was done in the previous two years. It used to be a metal roof. We put a TPO with ribs on it. So it has the visual effect of the metal roof. And we replaced all the other roofs with E P D M. Now we're going and replacing the remaining roofs. So. Rooftop units at Colonial Village, they are at the end of their lot useful life or near it. They're some of the units is, I'll go through, you know, they are having mechanical issues with them, getting them balanced and running. Some are just, it's again, what kind of Dan said is mechanical equipment has a useful life to it. It's it's at that point. Some of the units you may not be having issues with daily, but there's more efficient units out there. And again, when we go to resize any of the or replace any of the units, we're looking at the present day codes and seeing how we can increase ventilation, improve any heating deficiencies or cooling deficiencies you may have while we do that. Another item at Colonial Village is the vinyl asbestos floor tile or what we call B C T is vinyl composition tile. It's basically in all the corridors. We have some cracking. It's deteriorated. It's just looking to refresh in that corridor. Colonial Village, going back to kind of the security and access control. As we've done other projects, we've created secure vestibules at most of the other buildings where you get buzzed in at the outside. You go into so-called blocked vestibule or secure vestibule. There you would exchange credentials directly adjacent to a main office. At Colonial Village, that isn't possible how it's set up right now. So the yellow area on the slide is actually relocating the main office from the opposite side of the lobby to immediately adjacent. So you have the same entry procedure as all the rest of your buildings. This is the only one that's that's remote and it would be renovating it to make it immediately adjacent. So. Eric Road, again, just flooring replacements throughout certain vintage vintages of the building. There is some asbestos, some is not asbestos composition tile. It's just it's worn, it's chipping. Asbestos. Obviously, it's a health concern. If it's chipping, it's a bigger issue. Your stuff is intact. It's ma- maintainable. But it's, you know, a good idea if you're doing renovations on the school to incorporate some of that work. So eventually you don't have any asbestos in your buildings. Eric Road, we're replacing some rooftop units, exhaust fans. Again, this is equipment that's hidden on the roofs. Nobody really sees, but it's what makes the buildings run day to day. So. West Street, again, some more rooftop units, the unit ventilators in the rooms that provide fresh air in some heating for those classrooms. Those are all being replaced at West Street. This was the storage building, kind of mentioned in phase one. It's a sixty by a hundred pole barn structure. It's got a foul true foundation system. It's got a mezzanine. It'll have lighting, a sprinkler system. I'd like, I mean, we're indicating a million dollars. I always like to bring up, there are other buildings, if you look at pole buildings that are this size that can be done cheaper, but S C D's requirements brings that price up because they require a foundation system, gray beams. There's a whole other level when you get to S C D on what they require. So. At the high school, middle school campus, you guys have some existing signage out by the road. Those are the images to the far left. We're looking to put some digital signage, increase the top part of it. To kind of be able to allow you guys to change what's on those signs from inside the building. And it's not just letters. You can put graphics and have multiple things going on, rolling on it throughout the entire day. You know, every five minutes, ten minutes, however long you want those to be on the screen. So. The other thing going again back to security and access control is adding some traffic gates to limit people where you want them to be on this campus. You have some presently, there's the photo there is underneath the pedestrian bridge. You have some other ones down just outside the building here. It's just adding some additional ones again to restrict the traffic flow to how you guys want it during events. At the high school, middle school is what we're calling reconstruction of the tennis courts. It's kind of that, but it may be new tennis court set a new location and transfer formation of those into a parking lot. That's all still being worked out. But whether you provide a new tennis court or reconstruct the existing one in a present location, the cost is essentially the same. So for budgeting, we have the budget for either one. It's just fine tuning the scope as we go through the process, what makes sense. Edward Towne, jumping back to individual buildings, again, more rooftop units, more exhaust fans. As well as unit ventilators and the associated shelving next to it. This one, it actually doesn't look too bad. I have some photos of the high school where they're substantially more. It doesn't mean every single one of them is in that condition, but they're at the end of their life. It would be open shelving similar to the images, image to the top left, but they'd be all metal. So you wouldn't have any plastic laminate that's going to peel. It's going to be a nice metal surface finished to match the UNIVENTS. And it's similar to what we've done at the other buildings that we've been replacing the unit ventilators. Edward Towne, the 2020 addition towards athletic fields was the only section that wasn't replaced back in 2017 when we did the rest of the middle school. So now we're bringing that up to the the same level as the rest of the facility. Also at Edward Towne is the P A system. As we've done other projects, P A systems have been part of the project as far as making minor upgrades to this school. But it was never a full reconstruction or replacement. It also includes replacing speakers. So there's a couple of photos of some speakers. We're looking at not just a replacement so-called in kind, but we're looking at any other space that may need a speaker, extra enhancements of additional locations, interior locations, too. So. Also, Edward Towne is the the shop classrooms. We walk this with the facilities committee. It's basically the space is almost original to when it was constructed. The benches are are worn. The space just needs to be refreshed and handicap accessibility, the image in the middle. You actually have a set of stairs that goes down into the space. So it's not handicap accessible. So we'll be looking at putting a ramp or some kind of a lift into it. There's two, two shop classrooms are both the same. They both have candy cap accessibility issues, very similar conditions. Going to the high school, again, the P A system, a complete replacement, looking at the speakers. So really at the completion of this project, along with smart schools projects that we replaced other speakers at other buildings in the 2020 project, we replaced other speakers at West Street. This should bring your P A system all up to the same same level. At the high school is actually this building, the A L C. It's not a total gut to this room. It's just refreshing the room. There's some images of the ceiling. It's really back in this area here that there's issues, but it's really bringing this up to another level, just ref- refinishing some of the finishes. Originally, the projectors and screens were part of this project. As you can see, those have been done. So again, it's some of the scope kind of just evolves as you're going through it. So. At the high school, also the the shop classrooms, again, they're very similar condition to the middle school, except these are handicapped accessible. They're all at the same ground level, but it's again, it's it's looking at the the whole room, all the equipment in the room, the tables, and just refreshing everything in that space. At the high school, again, mechanical units, rooftop units, exhaust fans. These are the images, the unit ventilator shelving, the one in the middle where the laminate surface is essentially gone. Some of them are wood. The last few slides are the high school auditorium renovation. Your existing auditorium, it's the kind of the three photos at the right showing the outside the interior stage and the just an interior view, you have a capacity about seven hundred students or seven hundred seats. The rendering to the left is an extra view, obviously, of looking from like the bus loop at the facility. So we're adding on to the building. We're getting a capacity about one thousand one hundred and twenty-two. Your present auditorium is a single level. We do on that one. Look on the one to left. There's a two levels. There's the main level and there's the mezzanine level. So you have extra seating that you wouldn't normally have when you look at your existing auditorium. If you look at the orientation of the auditorium, we're basically taking your present orientation and rotating it ninety degrees. We looked at expanding the auditorium out the same exact way, keeping the layout the same. But it it really didn't give you the capacity because then we had to raise the roof. Everything was off centered when you were looking at the stage. This rotating around, creating a lobby out there, a lot of a gathering area. What you're not seeing is the fine tuning of the plan to include elevators, to include toilet rooms. Again, going back to the security and access control is when there's an event at the auditorium, it's you're going to be pretty much locked to that area around auditoriums that can't wander throughout the building. There's a dedicated entrance into the auditorium that's kind of off to the left side. So as you walk up the ramps, the stairs, they have their own kind of entrance into that space. And that that wraps up kind of a summary of what is in the 2022 project. Like I said, it's not everything. It's some of the bigger things. We're looking to put together some boards in the process of that, if there's any fine tunes to be able to present on the board day in this room. So the people, the voters can look at some of the stuff that's happening in the projects.
Just one. Just one thing I want to say. This is really Paul Trump and Turner. They've been with us now for a number of years and when, you know, you hear Brad talk about doing a roof in 2017 and that's not in notes that he's holding on to, and it's not up on the screen. It's because they've been a really important part of the fiber and fabric of all these projects that we've had over the past six, six, seven years. And certainly I know Greg Phillips, who's our director of facilities relies Brad and Turner and and their respective expertise for a lot of the things that we do. And we've certainly been very fortunate to have a two, two companies that we can trust. When when we work with them and they've done just a really great job of being part of our team. So I know you probably don't get to hear that very often, Brad, but thanks for the work that you've done with us and that, you know, I know you'll continue to do.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any residents comments? They call for motion to accept the consensus agenda items that submitted. Any discussion, any items or anything to separate for vote? And then all those in favor, please say hi. Hi, who's abstaining? Who carries? Call for motion except the personnel report has submitted. I'm going to separate number three. Is there anything else to separate? If not, all those in favor accepting items one and two, and then four through forty-one, please say hi. Hi, who's abstaining? Who carries? I'm three.
Elizabeth Orloff. Sorry, join me up here. Elizabeth, welcome to our board meeting tonight and we're we're happy to make a recommendation to the school board for Elizabeth Orloff to join us as a grant funded A I S math position in interventionist at Colonial Village. And just a couple of things about Elizabeth. She's an Amherst native, Williamsville North graduate as well as a, this must be very interesting, graduate from Kenesha's and also Niagara. So our tribals. And she really has a passion for studying literacy, which you're still going to, you know, school for certification. And really likes her role in education and and kind of getting these very various experiences. She has an eight and a ten year old at home and four dogs. Four dogs and she really she really enjoys camping. So we're we're excited to have you aboard. We'd ask for the board to support her hiring. Thank you.
All those in favor accepting Elizabeth as our A I S math interventions for Colonial Village, please say hi. Hi. Congratulations. Also let you know about the superintendent is with three puppies. Capitol Project, I think we covered the bases pretty much.
Just just to close the dance. We, for the funding, it's not going to come out of any extra taxpayer money. It's all going to ladder for us. We do give them our share of the dollars that are required. So just just to keep that in mind. Vote for this project. It's a good project. Hopefully you can get it going. Thanks.
All right, policies. I'm going to call for a motion to accept the second reading. Alright, um, policies, I'm going to call for a motion to accept the second reading. Actually, we don't need a motion on that because it's already coming from the committee. Is there any item to discuss or anything to separate for the policies?
Yeah, Steve, I'd like to just have a quick discussion to separate policy eighty three twenty.
Alright, can we vote then on the rest of the remaining policies then?
Yes.
Alright, we'll separate eighty three twenty, the remaining policies minus eighty three twenty, all those in favor accepting the other policies, please say aye. Aye, pose your standing. Very good. Alright, eighty three twenty.
What what is the difference, Dan, between this new eighty three twenty and one before? Is is.
So, good question. So they did, they did quite a bit with like at the beginning, if you could, if you could maybe throw that up there. You'll you'll see that at the beginning, they did something with the definitions and they did this on a number of these policies that had to do with instruction in curriculum.
Eighty three twenty.
Eighty three twenty. So you'll see on the screen above, so that they they just, they define instructional material, they define library material. And then they define textbooks. So they just kind of break it out and create a little bit more clarity for for anybody who looks at it. There's some information on here regarding calculators. That I don't believe was in the previous policy. And then other than that, it's really just some language changes, but there's no nothing, there was nothing really significant. With regard to change, except for changing the way that they were restructuring over these policies.
Now, you mentioned they. You mentioned they.
Oh, good, good, good question.
Who's they, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So we get our policy recommendations that they can change as they come from the COSER. Which is through the the way we work through our BOSIs, we actually pay for a COSER as do most districts in the area. And they have a legal team that looks at laws and regulations and then make recommendations for policies.
Now, is. When it comes to library materials, does the board or the librarian? Make those decisions or look at.
Good question, the librarian, as opposed to like textbooks, which textbooks come to the Board of Education.
Okay, and so new material, never come to the board or always the librarian?
Correct. Correct. In other words, you're talking about library materials. Yeah, library materials don't come to the board.
Always.
Correct.
Okay, that's it.
I think one of the other key parts of that one, that particular policy is the calculator piece. I think the clarification that came out from from BOSIs with that for nice and was the fact that students do not need to purchase their own calculators for. The high school classes. That was, I know that is one big thing with parents.
And and the fact that, you know, some of them are just so expensive.
Yes. Yeah, hundred and four dollars.
We always just have to buy it.
Alright. All those in favor then accepting that policy, please say aye. Aye, pose your standing, which carries. Alright, um, we have the nine tag MOU as an informational item there. Right next official student numbers report.
Yeah, we don't have much going on event wise right now, so. The only things we have going on are we have underclassmen picture retakes are the twenty fourth. Then we have a kickball tournament on November tenth on the turf. And then our sports are doing well. Our girls varsity team have had their senior night on the seventeenth, so Monday. Um, our girls swim team, varsity swim team set a fifty year old NFL league record and qualified for the state meet in November. And are currently number one in both Western New York and New York State. Our girls varsity cross country team, they were runner up for first place out of sixty seven schools at the Alden Invitational this past weekend. And our girls varsity volleyball team finished in the top four out of sixteen schools at the NT tournament on Saturday. Our girls JV cross country finished second in their division this season. And then our varsity boys varsity boys volleyball team held their senior night last Tuesday. But the their current record is four four and they're playing tomorrow. Our varsity football and cheerleading held their senior night. The fourteenth and all our our clubs and extracurriculars are in full swing with regular meetings and yeah, everything's going pretty well.
Yeah, that's excellent report. And no idea what new musical, the next musical is, huh? They're keeping that under lock and key, aren't they? I heard the superintendent wants to dance in this year. He's practiced, isn't he?
Superintendent is much more likely to play in the kickball game than participate in the musical, just unless you have the hands sticking out of the curtain again this year.
You are horrible with that.
Well, I know, but that was my that my one and only musical experience.
We will keep that.
Yeah, perfect.
Alright, well, we'll go to the superintendent's report.
Great, we're really quick. We're still hiring for a few positions. You'll hear this all the time. I'll just highlight bus drivers. We're looking for bus drivers all the time. Personal carriage still town.
Thank you. Personal carriers, we're actually up to date on.
Great.
We're coming flush with our laborers and cleaners. We are currently looking for a cook at Colonial Village in two type positions. One at Colonial Village and Eric Grove. Also a treasurer exempt position for the business office.
Very good. Thank you. Capital project, I was going to make a note, but you heard the presentation. I would just want to reiterate that the capital. The vote for that project is November twenty ninth. The times will be from twelve PM until eight PM here in the ALC. Okay, and I and I just want to reiterate that it's over numerous years, as you saw from actually twenty one or twenty two, excuse me, out to twenty seven. Just one more thing, food service. We continue to work on get getting forms in for families again. Not all of our schools receive or are the universal feeding, so we're always trying to increase the number of people who turn in their forms. That would make it more likely that a school would fit into that category.
Questions to superintendent's report? Alright, we reports to the board. And there, I use for board discussion. Just a reminder for those of us, we have school association conference coming up this coming weekend or next week. In Syracuse, so. No, so you're going to be there. Pre-law, are you going to pre-law? Yeah. You're not. Alright, any old business? Any new business? No public comments, any board member comments? Alright then, I call for motion adjourned. I'll second it. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, pose your standing, we are adjourned.
It is, isn't it nice to not hear buzzing in the background when these speakers are on? What a.